Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2017-2018 Board of Alderman Budget Deliberations. Today is May 10th, 2017, and today we are here for the departmental presentation portion of the automatic process. Before we begin, will everyone please join me as we salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson. Alderman Beatty. Alderman Bevan.
Here.
Alderman Beer.
Madam Secretary, Alderman Beer would like to be excused.
Alderman Casey.
Madam Secretary, Alderman Casey also would like to be excused.
Alderman Gurman.
Here.
Alderman Genitazio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardeman.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
We have 11 present, we do have a quorum.
Does she know that Ellen's here?
Yeah.
At this point, the first department organization on our agenda is the Milford Police Department, page 43, account number 4310. Good evening, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank all of you. I won't, I'll try to keep my remarks very brief. I just wanted to point out some new items that are in the budget this year that weren't in the budget last year, and just to tell you what those are. There's a Motorola maintenance account for $69,000. We're starting to see the phase-in of the combined police-fire radio system. I think it was a $3.75 million radio system. We had stretched out as part of the contract, the maintenance fees, that maintenance fee will grow every year, and so this is the first phase. This is about half of what I believe it'll be next year. There's another account for 6,800, excuse me, for Narcan, and that is a drug, for lack of a better term, that our officers will use to treat those that are experiencing a narcotics overdose. We've, what we've learned is, you should know that we're not required to carry that, we're not first responders, the fire department is, but what we have found since we combined the police-fire dispatches, now, we're all getting the call at the same time, which means that we're arriving at the call much sooner and encountering, you know, these events. So, we have asked to have our officers equipped and trained in Narcan. It's a nasal spray, different than what the paramedics in the fire department in here, in here, excuse me, administer, that's an injection, I understand it.
Chief, would you, would you mind just scoot the mic over a little bit? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thanks.
You've got a kind of a weird configuration here, it's like right in your face. There we go. I'm sorry, is that better? Great, alright. I'm sorry, did you need me to repeat that, or did you? Okay, because, thank you. You did have kind of an odd look at, when you were kind of looking at me like you didn't hear me, so I apologize. And then the BWC, the Body-Worn Camera Cloud Storage for $96,000, that account, that'll actually be about $110,000 a year. The reason it's 96 is that it starts a little bit later in the year. The first year for body-worn cameras, the purchase of the equipment was paid for by the state grant, as you know. We had advanced the money, and the first year's cloud storage was paid for by the grant. And that's, that's a number that'll continue to go up over the next five years of the
Any members of the board have any question for the chief? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
I also saw in your budget that you did not make allowances for the SRO this year with the Board of Education. If in fact, just conceptually speaking, if in fact, the Board of Alderman, a Board of Education takes on the full responsibility of salary for the SRO, will you, will the police department be liable for the, those two months that you, that they would work for your department and back, and pay them, or supplement that, that salary?
We, no, the SROs are in there. The, our 50 percent of their salary remains in there, and if it was taken out, I'm aware of that.
Chief, you mean? Additional one, the addition, the additional-
Oh, the additional SROs.
Additional one SRO that was requested by the Board of Education?
No, we didn't include that in our budget.
But my question was, if the Board of Education finds its way to-
Right, I understand your question. No, we wouldn't have the money to pay those additional two months.
So then, for, therefore, they would not work at two months? How, how does that work?
Well, they have to. Once we hire them, unless we were going to lay them off, we would, if, I have no intention of hiring unless you folks tell me to hire someone. But we don't have the money to pay even half the salary, and we don't have money to even, even if they pay the full salary, we don't have money to pay that half, so we wouldn't hire them. We'd have to have, the fund would have to be, to be in this budget, which I didn't request, unless you put it in there, or come from the Board of Ed in its entirety to cover 12 months.
So, but, when you say, you didn't put it in, and you did not hire, or you will not hire, but does the Board of, Board of Education have the ability to hire that person?
No, no, and state law wouldn't allow them, certainly wouldn't allow them to.
Okay, that, just a clarity, clarification on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I see on police cruisers, you have $255,000. Approximately how many cruisers does $255,000 buy?
That's approximately six to seven cruisers. Cost of cruisers have gone up, since we switched over from the Crown Vic, it's gone up, I think this year they're about 30, 31,000. The Crown Vics were about 22. And also remember that there's other costs associated with that, changeover fees, painting, wiring, there's probably anywhere from on a minimum of about $7,000 to $12,000 worth of additional costs. So, we're looking at about, probably around six, maybe seven with trades.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, Chief. Looking here under the account 49770247, it's auto fingerprinting system, you put in for that, but was zeroed out. Could you tell me a little bit about it?
I'm sorry, I-
It's a fingerprinting-
Oh, yeah, that's the Aethis system. We, we put it in every year. We don't have the ability, even though the technology has existed for some time, we don't have the ability to take your fingerprints from a crime and place it on a, a screen and get an automatic, get automatic feedback as to who you are. We have to go to West Haven to do that, or they have a machine, or we have to go to another department. And so we've always sought to get, you know, we'd like to have that technology here. It's not essential, we can continue to use West Haven. I'm hoping that at some point, you know, the apartment, the size of Milford, and with the reputation of Milford, I'd like to see that. And so I'll continue to keep it in the budget until we have the money and to be able to do that. So that, that's what that is.
I have another question. As Alderman Vitale was speaking a little bit about the resource officer that the Board of Ed had put in their budget for half of the expense, and, you know, I didn't see the other half, you know, in your budget. But, so, we have one in each high school, and in two of the middle schools, and then the third middle school, it's being shared, you know, there. But, the question is, is like, to have a resource officer in, in all the middle schools, is that something that you were in favor of? Did you think that we would need to have the extra resource officer in, one in each middle school?
The, the, the two officers that you talk about, they, right, they share the three middle schools, and they also share the, the academy. And if you recall, the budget request we had asked, we partnered with the Board of Ed, and we had asked for school resource officers for every, for every school, for all three, well, actually all three middle schools and the two high schools. But, right now, I think when we start to look at where we want to put our money, well, I believe the SRO program has significant value, and I think the Board of Ed will tell you that, and the parents will tell you that. I just don't know that that's someplace we can put our money right now. I did have a conversation with the Board of Education last year, they were going to ask for two additional. And we told them at that time that we wouldn't be asking for that. And then, I was aware that they were asking for, I thought they were going to ask for two, I wasn't even aware of, until you had just mentioned it and reminded me. I just don't see a place for it in our budget right now. And I think, well, we can do a better job with more SROs, I think we do a very adequate job with what we have. And, and I haven't had any complaints that, I know, there's been no complaints made to me by our people that they can't cover, I think, I think it works fine.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
I have a concern about account number 4944, the personal protective equipment you budgeted for $54,000. Can you share with the members of the board why this account has not been funded?
Sure, absolutely. And we, and we talk about this every year, and, and I'm sure all the departments are talking about the same thing. If you recall after 9/11, the federal government provided equipment to every police department. It's personal protection equipment, their gas masks, filters that need to be replaced, I believe every two or three years, I believe every two or three years. And then the, the masks and the gloves and those other equipments only good, I believe, for five years. And it was great to have those, there was, the probability was very slight that we would need those, like, there's always a possibility, but we always say one thing, you know, we, we really focus on the probabilities, not the possibilities. And so, while I put that in there, when we're looking, there's a question of whether we can afford it, if that's a good place to spend our money. Now, in a perfect world, we, we should probably buy those every five years, but the likelihood of us needing those is, you know, is more remote, and so, I, usually that's the first thing that I've cut out, when we start to look at that number at the end. And, and when I look at it on balance, I'm not saying that it's not important, but on balance, do I want to give up something that is operational, something that we need, that we use every day, versus something that we're less likely going to use? And, and to your point, I've also talked to my colleagues, you know, other chiefs, and they're all faced with the same thing, and I, I'm not aware of any other department that continually funds that equipment, any municipal department.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through you. Chief, I just didn't know if this, if this equipment consisted of like bulletproof vests.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, absolutely not, it's just-
So, that was what really raised my concern. But if it's not a high priority, and if it's something that is a high probability, you know, then I, I could understand that.
Let, I'm sorry, let me just make sure that I, I want to be real clear on this. It, it's just, the type of equipment that would be used in a chemical attack, but our, our special response team still has those. They have all those suits. We, we pay for, we buy those, every, and they'd be for special response, it'd be only about 10 people. But we do also have gas masks for everyone, because gas masks can be used in a number of, you know, other chemical environments. It's really more the suits and the gloves, but nothing to do with any type of bulletproof vest or anything, but thank you for that.
Okay, so maybe moving forward, we should identify it as chemical personal protective equipment?
You know what, I'll do that, because that way it'll clear that up, right?
Okay, thank you.
I'll make sure I do that.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. I'm sorry.
On the overtime-
Yes.
-regular and dedicated training, and also on holiday, I notice there's a disparity between what you had asked and what was ultimately recommended through the Board of Finance. What is that difference, and how does that affect your department?
Well, I mean, we know with a relatively high degree, degree of certainty, just, you know, look at the historical record here, what we're going to spend. And so, when you look at dedicated training, we know, what I've asked for is what I believe that we'll spend. And I think, if you look next year when I'm here, I think you'll see it's going to be very close. But we've done that every year that I've been chief, there's never been a time where overtime has been funded to what we know we're going to spend, even what contractually we have to spend. But we also know at the same time that there's likelihood that there's going to be vacancies from time to time, and we'll use that, those monies, we have to use 60 percent of that money for overtime to hire back that vacancy. So it's never a clean wash, you know, when you hire a vacancy, you don't keep that salary, you lose 66 percent of that. So we take the rest of that, and, and at the end of the year, well, we ran out of overtime money in January, beginning of January, and last year, beginning of January, the year before February. So, we'll look to scrape accounts, and we know that some of these things we won't, we won't buy, because we'll have to fund those numbers. And so, and so that's how we've operated. If we're ever at full strength, and when no one ever leaves, and all the crossing guards come to work, we won't have enough money. And I've often said that to you, and I think your response was, well, if you need, then come back. And I've never had it come back.
If I could, please, Mr. Chairman, the, there are several positions that are still unfilled in the department. Does overtime in any way, is that needed to compensate, and at what point does it become more fiscally practical to fill those vacancies than to continue to cover it with existing staff?
Right now, we have two vac, right now, I'm sorry, we, we have one vacancy, we will have a second vacancy. We just graduated a class of eight. The benefit that we have is, we can get them all hired at once, and all on the road at once. We don't have to do it in piecemeal over years. So our vacancies don't exist for a long period of time. If we didn't have our own academy, those kind of numbers would take many years, and cost, you know, a great deal of overtime. That overtime number, even though what I requested is what we're going to need, it's 22,000, excuse me, 220,000 less than what we had last year. Because, when you have a recruit class, you're paying them to be in the academy, but you're also paying the backfill. We don't have to pay the backfill. So, we'll actually save money this year. I always think it's better to have police officers there, and, you know, we, it's, it's one or the other, either we're going to use the money for overtime, or we're going to use it to pay their salaries. I would assume the only thing you're really saving on is, you're not paying that, the other benefits during that period of vacancy. But there's so much value to have a, a police officer in a, in a car, and on the street.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chief, I got a question regarding account number 49410201, speed detector radar, That, that request for that kind of money, what is that, does that buy you?
I have it, right, I have it here. Those are replacements of the, the radar trailers that you see, that we put out. We have actually started some, a new, a newer program, and I think it's going to be successful. And we've talked about how to fund that. These are large devices, as you know, it's old technology. They warn you when you're going too fast, but they don't capture any data. And, what we still use to capture data, and you know, because, probably all of you at one point has asked us, in some, on a weekly basis, to do traffic studies because of your constituent complaints, and, and we try to do the best we can, but we have the old tubes that you put across the street, and they measure, you know, the distance, time over distance, and, and so there's new technology that can do all that for you, and even send it back remotely. So every year, we've been asking for those. And so in addition to that, so we're trying to replace those, those old radar units, and we also want to purchase devices that we can put, that are semi-permanent, that we can put up on poles, that can capture data of a problem area over time. And that's something that we're going to even pull out. And it has a flashing strobe light, but it, it actually captures data for us. So it does, it does what the radar trailer does, and it does what the speed measuring device is. But also what you're seeing in there is replacement of a, one additional radar unit for $6,300, and that's what a laser radar unit and a patrol car cost. So you're seeing a couple different things there. You're actually seeing three devices. Two of the devices, the former devices that I just described, and then one of the radar, the laser radar.
Thank you, Chief. And the other, only other question I have is, I know the state gave the police department a grant for aggressive distracted driving-
Distracted driving.
Yeah. It, did, does that allow you to buy any equipment to further capture some of the distracted drivers?
No, it didn't, it, it just covered personnel costs. That's a 14-day program, I think we made 249 stops. Compliance rate in Milford's been, is good. It's improving, I mean, that's where you want it to go, you want, it's going in the right direction, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, Chief. The question I have is, on page 46, there's a line item for video, video camera, and two years ago, it was funded for $17,000, last year for $10,000, and the request was for $73,000 this year. Can you explain what that was?
You're looking, you're, what you're looking at is the in-car video system?
It's the line item 49800602.
Right, right, you're looking at the in-car video system. We had cameras in all our cars. We didn't, we started to do it, and, and we experimented over time with a couple, and then we added it to the whole fleet. And they're very expensive, and so we stopped, now we really have no cameras in the cars. Because they're, they're 60, well, they go anywhere from $6,800 to $9,000. And they just got to be too expensive. And so we came across this TASER product that is much less expensive, and something that we can afford. So, that $73,000 would put, would buy 25 units, which is a considerable savings from what the other ones. It's a, it's a, it's not a very sophisticated system, but that's okay. It actually works with our body cameras, where this system, when the lights go on, all the cameras within 30 feet of all the officers would go on, because one of the problems you have with cameras is officers forget to turn them on, or something happens and, and they didn't have the time to turn it on. So, this will activate all the cameras, and it will then take all the data and store it in the same place. Because, I mean, I don't know if you've ever, you know, if you do a lot of videotape, and if you have, and, and you look at, all of a sudden you pull the disc and go, wow, I've got like 20 files, or I don't know what they are, or how to find them, or how to search. Well, this eliminates all that. You really need to package these things in an area that you can recover those, and, and view those, and disseminate those. So, so that's what, that's what that is. It's the money to buy those cameras. Those cameras are actually on order, we just haven't taken, we probably wouldn't take order till probably September, we probably wouldn't take shipment until September anyways. Thank you.
Alderman Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the chief. First of all, thank you for all that you do and your staff.
Thank you.
Question, we have 82 officers on staff, and 18 sergeants. So you said there's, how many unfilled positions, and how many did we hire recently?
We have two police officer positions, we recently hired eight. We, we will likely hire someone in January, excuse me, in July. We're looking at a, at a lateral transfer, which we don't do often unless somebody's really sharp. So we have, I mean, people want to come here, and that is, you know, that's never stopped. No one leaves here, so.
And same, and how about the sergeant positions? Those are all filled, filled?
They are filled. We will have one sergeant opening July 12th, based upon a retirement. And that's where the second opening will come. The officer left, but they're still on the books until July 12th. And then we'll make that promote, in fact, our promotional exam is underway now, the writts are done, and we're in the process of doing, well, the consultant is in the process of doing the oral examinations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Chief, line item 49770190, I'm concerned with the inconsistency of consistent pricing of computers. So, $44,000, how many computers does that buy for you?
Well, you're, you're looking at servers.
Oh, those are servers?
No, there's servers and computers. Now, one of the things that we've always done, although we, we changed that as the budget became tighter, is we started a replacement cycle, replacement program. We know what the lives of computers are, and we know what the lives of the laptops in the car. Remember, a laptop in a car, a laptop in a car gets banged around, they don't last long at all. So we were trying to buy five a year. Five a year will give us, was giving us three years on the laptops, and five years on the desktops. We've now stretched that out to five years in the car, four and a half years in the cars, and seven and a half, or eight years on the desktops. So we're, we're stretching these things, but we're, you know, but we're managing, I mean, every department's stretching their computers. The ones in the cars, you really, those are critical, those can't go down. So, what we're doing, we're still buying five of each, five in-car, or, excuse me, laptops, and then the rest are either desktops or servers, but we've stretched that replacement cycle out.
Okay, just to follow up, confusion. You have 49770123, computer hardware-
Right.
-which I would assume is a station or a computer. Then under computers, that 0190 is computers, and you're saying those are the laptops?
Those are laptops and desktops. What you're looking at, is you're looking at message switches, critical server components, the records management backbone, you're looking at software, excuse me, I'm sorry, you're looking at software. You're looking at an Ops Cat server, and our MS server, and message switches, and I believe, there are some other components that I don't know what the names are, and I have to apologize. I can take you on a tour of my, of the data center, and I could point it to you and tell you that-
Right, but-
-that rack needs to be replaced.
As you can see, it's awfully confusing, because we have computer hardware, to the layperson, computer hardware is a, is a, is a visual, and then we have computers, which is another visual, and what you just got through saying, and, and I'm not talking about software, I'm just talking about-
Right, software's below.
Just confusing to me, so maybe to make it more specific, in next year's budget or something, to be more specific with the computers and actually what they are, with laptops?
Well, it actually, I actually do, if you, if you have the, well, and the document that I submit, it's broken down. This is, finance provides these names and these categories for us, but when you look at the document I submit, for instance, under computers and upgrades, it'll say laptop computers. It'll talk, five computers at 404,575. It'll talk wireless modems to supplement those laptops-computers, three at 1,500. It'll talk about desktop replacements, it'll give you the number of what we need. It talks about a Fred computer system for forensic crime. It actually spells it out, it says 10 desktops at a thousand for 10,000. So we spell it out.
But you have to understand, we don't get that.
Yeah, I don't know that you fit all that in that little line.
So, you know, I, I know you're very specific, and that's why I, I just want to reiterate the fact that when we see it, it, this is what it says, you know, computer hardware on for 0123, and computers for 0190, and so that's tremendously.
Right, I think because, that's what it is, it is computers, laptops, desktops, Fred computers, just a forensic computer, they are physical computers, they may be called different things, but hardware, when you walk into this, into the data center, you're going to see a lot of switches. In fact, we need to replace the majority of our switches. And if there's an MIS person here, they can give me the name of a couple of those other things that you, we plug, I should know, I just can't remember, but it, it is just hardware. And the reason we separated it was, well, if I, if I put it together, you're going to look at that number, it's going to be too big for you, so if we separate it, it's too smaller number.
Sounds easier, sounds better. No, but the point is, you can see where the confusion comes, where I don't know what you're talk, I don't know what you're talking about by just looking at the, the book, so thank you.
Yeah, I think it, you know, in these categories, I mean, you're talking one or two words for a description, and I know sometimes it's confusing, especially when something says consultant fees, and, and I'd be happy to answer those for you, either here- And I'd be happy to answer those for you either here or you can call me up.
You did.
I could even give you a copy of this.
You did, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. How many canines do we have and are they all vested?
Yes, they are. We have four canines, three patrol dogs, one narcotic, I'm sorry. We have four canines, three are patrol dogs, those are German shepherds, and one's a lab, drug detection dog, and they all have vests. And they've all been donated. I mean, we, we, people want to donate stuff for dogs all the time. And we, you know, we could have 10 vests a dog and, because that's how, you know, much people care about the animals that we have.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not to the exclusion of the police officers, I didn't mean to say that, but they treat the animals well.
For the chief. Alderman Genatizio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Chief, you made an interesting comment that stuck with me, that when Alderman Smith brushed on the overtime and those couple different accounts, you mentioned the fact that you've never had to come back to ask for money, that you've went into your budget and moved some money around from different accounts to make up the difference, which we greatly appreciate. So my question is budgetary, strictly budgetary. So with the situation that we're in as a city as a whole with the state, how do you plan on managing an expectation, if you're already juggling just to make overtime work, and now you have this extra burden, and we come back to you and we say that we need a 1% or 1 and 1/2%, or let's just call it 2% reduction? Where do you realistically feel that you're going to be able to cut in your department without jeopardizing the safety and the welfare of the citizens of Milford?
I just want to be clear that when I say that we'll, we never have to come back, we basically were a different department the last six months because we stop overtime. We don't, we, we don't train as much. We, even for investigations, we don't let people, we don't call people in. We, and you know, the union would attest to this, we go bare bones. I wouldn't want to give the numbers publicly, but we go bare bones enough where, you know, there's question on quite a bit by the union through my office continuously. So, and then we don't buy things that we would normally buy. So there's no money sitting around. We just know that, okay, the last six months, we've got to, we can't spend this because we're going to, we're going to need it for that. But to your point, even a 2% reduction, which for us would be $240,000, $250,000, and knowing that 89% is wages, personnel costs, that's people. It absolutely is people. And by my calculations, it would mean five police officers. And one canine off the road, just to save the stipend money. I mean, when you look at the budget, you just, there's no place to absorb that kind of money. And in many places you couldn't because you have contractual requirements that you have to adhere to. I would think that's the same situation for every department when you start talking about significant cuts or where that's going to come from. And I certainly hope it doesn't come to that. I mean, we worked so hard to build up where we are.
Right. And just to interject, so I guess what I'm getting at is there's a possibility that you may come back for overtime reasons if you need to cut other things in order to...
Well, that's why I believe that if we had to cut that kind of 1% or 2%, even 1%, that we wouldn't be able to fund the preparation that we have now. We wouldn't be, so we'd have to, you know, look people in the eye and say, we're taking five police officers off the road and we're going to stop certain programs and we're going to reduce, increase the geographical size of, of your patrol sector and just, you know, tell people, this is the, this is the police department that we can afford right now. I don't think it would make sense to try to maintain the same type of services when you don't have the money to pay for the training and the equipment, because that's where it would come from.
Okay.
But that would be a business decision that we would obviously have to make if that was the case, and hopefully that's not going to be the case.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any board members have any more questions for the chief? I guess not. Thank you very much, Chief, for your presentation and for answering all the questions for us and for the great job you're doing for the residents of the city of Milford.
Thank you.
At this, at this point, the next department on our agenda is the Literacy Volunteers of Southern Connecticut, page 92, account number 4827.
I'm Tammy Jackson, Executive Director for Literacy Volunteers. Thank you, Mayor Blake. He's passing around our multicultural celebration essays. Once a year, we ask our students to do a writing prompt. As important as it is to speak English, we also feel it's important to be able to write. A lot of our students don't have that ability, so we try to work on that. Once a year, we put it, we print it and they get together and we have a little potluck where people celebrate their different cultures. And so, you know, if you're ready at some point, you can certainly read those essays on your own. I came to you all last year hoping for some mercy because we were struggling financially. Literacy Volunteers has been in Milford for over 20 years. And we were running a deficit and really struggling. Our fundraisers weren't raising as much as they had in the past. Grants that were awarded to us in the past were cut. So at the end of last year, even with your support, we were still under $15,000. For a nonprofit that really kind of works month to month, that was a really huge blow to us starting this year. Right now, I have about $2,500 in our operating account, which tells me that I have some really difficult decisions to make. There's only two paid employees, part-time. So, you know, do I cut my own hours? Do I lay off my program coordinator? So I'm, I'm here yet again asking for some support and some help. Last year, we tutored over, we tutored 96 students. We had 56, 59 tutors, sorry, I can't see. And we had about four, a little over 4,000 tutor volunteer hours. So say, for example, we chose to pay each of them $20 an hour, that's over $80,000 of services that we're giving to people in Milford to support them with their English skills. 75% are women, so we mostly help women that come to Milford. We have some other classes, too, for our children's programs. We have books for babies, toddlers, preschool. But really, our main focus is teaching our immigrant adults English skills. For example, Savun, I was sharing earlier with somebody, she came to us from Cambodia. She's been here for many years. And she recently became a citizen and just got a job while working over as a food, as a cafeteria helper at Meadowside. So that's where her son goes to school and she was able to speak English enough that she could have an interview and she got a job and, you know, she's contributing, she's paying taxes. I mean, so she's a great success story for us. She's now trying to get her GED, which is a little challenging because she only had a second grade education. So trying to teach someone who doesn't, you know, that's still trying to learn language, math, science, you know, from another language with only a second grade, so. But she continues to push through and, you know, we're really proud of her. So she doesn't give up and she keeps going. Another one of our students, Marissa, she's on the second to last page. She actually read her essay at our multicultural celebration. She comes to us from Brazil. She's only been here a couple of months. Now, we had just opened up our satellite office in the Milford library. In the past, we were only at Fanny Beach, which is a beautiful, great location, but it's really hidden. And when you're trying to explain to an immigrant fork at the road, they don't understand any of them's, like fork, what do you mean fork? Like bear right, you know, bear right. So it's a lovely little neighborhood building, but it's really difficult for some of them to find us. So we talked with the director at the library, they gave us a desk, and so Marissa went to the library because her husband had told her the United States has beautiful libraries. You should go there and look through the books and look through the programs. And so she saw our information there. And we have a seven-language sign, you know, because obviously they might not understand free English classes. And it was in her language she saw it and she spoke to the person at the desk. She joined our class, she's working with a one-on-one tutor, and then come to find out one of the tutors is her neighbor and they walk every day and walk the dog and they have a conversation class. So like, these are the people that we're helping, these are your neighbors, these are people that are trying to integrate themselves into our community. They are not takers, they just want to learn language. I mean, we have some that come from Syria and we had a family that came, they actually had escaped and went to Saudi Arabia. Well, she had a daughter and a son. And when they got there, she couldn't drive and her daughter couldn't have an education. And she said, I can't stay here. So she left her husband, brought her two children and came here so that her, her kids can get an education and so she can have some freedom. So those are some of the struggles, you know, that some of these people are, are coming here with. So again, I don't, I don't know if anyone has any questions about our programs or, you know, our finances.
I have one, Tammy. I take it that there's no charge for your students, both adults are...
Correct.
And I know that you have quite a few fundraisers throughout the year to help finance your, the great work that you do. Are you getting any more assistance from any other department in the city of Milford?
We have a $3,000, $3,200 block grant.
Did United Way give you anything?
Yes, United Way, it's about $5,000 this year.
Thank you. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Hi, Tam. I, I just want to reiterate that you guys do a great job with the man-hours that you need and what you do, it's all labor-intensive. Could you just tell me what your total operating budget is and how much of it is fundraising and how important not being able to raise that money fundraising?
Do you want me to talk about last year? Because those are hard facts, you know. So last year, we estimated $110,000. That's with our $16,000 in-kind, so we're actually under $100,000 budget because the city of Milford provides us Fanny Beach. So our fundraising is $35,000. Our grants, restricted and unrestricted, are 33. So our total income is about $95,000. Our payroll is 65. And then there's, you know, other expenses, like the lease of our copier and...
Thank you.
Books and stuff.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Tammy.
Hi, Frank.
Obviously, the Literacy Volunteers is a wonderful, a wonderful effort and something I know you've kind of spearheaded. You also, you're involved with the Junior League, too, and they obviously are integrally involved in Literacy Volunteers. I was glad to hear the little anecdotes and the essays in this book because it's a practical realization of what you've been able to accomplish. I'm interested, though, because I don't think we've ever asked this. I mean, are most of the people that are students in the, with the Literacy Volunteers program, are they mainly immigrants? I mean, we always had this idea that there are, and I know there are, people that, you know, were born and raised in, in our midst that for whatever reason are deficient in reading skills and it affects their lives. Is it, is the majority of it people that have immigrated?
Yeah, about 90% are ESL, are our ESL population.
And, and I know that the adult education also has a literacy program. Did you work with them in any way or you have common enrollment with them?
So I believe every state is, every city is mandated by the state to provide ESL services. What differentiates us from the Board of Adult Ed is we really focus on one-on-one, which is why we have so many of our, why we have so many tutors. And some of our students do go to classes and come to us, too. It's hard as an adult immigrant to sit in a classroom of, you know, 10 or 20 people and speak out loud. I mean, it's a really challenging thing, you know, and God forbid they know somebody, it's like, oh my God, they're going to talk about me. I mean, it's, it can be a really challenging task for them. So, you know, a lot of times they'll drop out. We focus one-on-one, we're very student-based. I mean, if we have a girl that comes in and she's a nail tech and she wants to know colors and how to communicate with her customers and wants to know how to deal with money, that's what we teach them. That's fundamental for their, their livelihood. So that's what they learn. If someone wants to come and they specifically want to get their citizenship, then that's what that tutor works on. They work on, you know, getting them their citizenship, they work on those questions. They sometimes bring them to Hartford and, and go with them for the testing. So, I mean, they really become much more than like a teacher. I mean, sometimes they become sort of a social worker. Like Florence Gambino has been around with us for 15, 20 years. And I always call her the social worker because she really takes these people under her wing. For example, a family had come from Italy. Well, they came here, they didn't understand how to get their children into school. You know, they're, they're living in their house and they don't know who to call, they can't communicate, like, you know, how do you ask for an Italian translator? I mean, they found their way to us. She's from Italy, so she was able to sort of support and help them, give them classes. But she went with them, you know, for two weeks to get their children enrolled in school. I mean, that was significant. I mean, what would they have done without her? I mean, I suppose they probably would have figured it out over, over time. But I mean, she was really instrumental in helping them with something that was important to them and necessary in getting their kids enrolled in school, so.
But the emphasis is on literacy. So for instance, you have students, your tutors obviously don't all speak Vietnamese or Italian or whatever language. So they come with a certain amount of verbal proficiency and what you're doing is teaching them practical applications, reading and writing.
Right.
Because I could, as you said, in a classroom, it's like, you know, the Tower of Babel, you've got everybody speaking different languages. It must be fairly challenging. But that's right, you're working on literacy specifically. So there's certain language familiarity that's expected when, when people enroll in your program, is that correct?
Yes.
You asked for $3,500 last year, the mayor's approved $5,000 this year. It's a very small portion of your, of your overall budget, obviously. When you said there was a shortfall, are you saying you're asking for more, that's what you're asking for? You, obviously, if you could get more, you would. But I mean, is, is, when you're here tonight presenting to us, you're happy with the, with what has been recommended through the Board of Finance for approval here, right?
Well, I, I realize adding a new line item is a challenge and I appreciate last year, I don't want to be greedy, you know, I, I realize, you know, we're under financial strains, so, I mean, more would always be helpful. But, you know, I, I thought $5,000 would be a doable number.
Thank you, Tammy. Thanks for, for all the, the good work your group does.
Thanks, Frank.
Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Tammy. Thank you for all your good work. Can you just touch on some of your fundraisers that you do, just for public announcement?
Yeah, so there's three main ones. We have a Leprechaun Leap, which is in March, so it's a takeoff on a polar plunge. That usually raises, raises us about $10,000 to $12,000. We range about 80 to 100 leapers. We do it at Walnut Beach and it's a lot of fun. It's the fastest fundraiser ever. You're in, you're out, that's it. People raise money and we have sponsors. Our next one coming up, which I know that you're a fan of, is our Neon Night Run. And it's in downtown Milford and that also raises, raises about $10,000 to $12,000. We used to have a wine tasting. Actually, we were the original wine tasting in Milford. It used to be at Laurelton Hall. And back in the day, that one event funded our entire budget. As you know, there's more, you know, wine tastings over time. We've done away with that. Last year, we tried a winter sprinter, you know, because we had such success with the Neon Night Run. It was themed around the holiday. I mean, you know, it raised some money, but not nearly enough. So it was probably $5,000, which was a really, and that was a part of that shortfall. So, you know, trying to decide going forward, do we try another something? Do we try to really work harder on that one? You know, the board is always encouraging, like, we need to do another fundraiser. I mean, I don't need to do another fundraiser. I mean, like, you know, I'm still trying to split time of doing programs. I don't want my entire, you know... time of doing programs. I don't want my entire, you know, time at the office to be all about fundraising. I want to give back to the programs. I want to be supporting the people that were there to help. Um, but it's hard when you're not making ends meet and, you know, that always is a burden.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Registration's open, too.
Any more questions regarding the Literacy Center? Seeing none, thank you very much, Tammy, for your presentation and for answering all our quest, questions and for the great work you do for the citizens of Milford.
Thanks, everybody. Okay.
Welcome. Next department on our agenda is the Milford Preservation Commission, page ninety-three, account number four-eight-two-eight.
Mr. Ch, Mr. Chair, this is a department similar to the Historic District Commission or Historic District Two. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Anybody have any questions regarding this, this, this account on the agenda? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next account on our agenda is the Law Department, page twenty-four, account number four-one-three-one.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Aldermen. I'm hoping any questions. My budget is relatively straightforward. It's the same as last year. The only changes noted are, uh, reflections of our, uh, recent, uh, agreement for our collective bargaining agreement with the City Hall Union.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. City Attorney Burcham, welcome tonight. I, I did see you got the, uh, the memo with the computers being at seven-hundred dollars. So thank you very much.
Welcome.
Alderman Beatty. Alderman Beatty, you want to turn your microphone on, please?
Thank you. My, I have a question about the law books and the publications. Um, it's not itemized here about electronic publications. It seemed to me that that is a spiraling cost usually, and I don't see here that that's a problem. Electronic communications, digitalized law references, et cetera.
We don't have any, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to Alderman Beatty, we don't have any electronic subscriptions, anything.
No.
Uh, the one subscription we used to get was the Connecticut Law Tribune, which was a newspaper, if you will. I called it the, uh, National Enquirer for lawyers. Um, and that would come out monthly. Um, but that went to an electronic print, so you had to be, you had to pay for a subscription. Uh, but it proved to be too costly in my budget, so we don't get that.
Is it essential? That's exactly what I was thinking. No.
No. I mean, uh, it, it did have, uh, case releases, uh, new cases, but we can get those through our online subscription, through our, our legal research, which is within our budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, can you explain other legal fees and miscellaneous professional fees and services? The difference between the two?
The, Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Gorman, the, the other legal fees is generally when we have to hire outside counsel, uh, for matters be outside of both mine or Deborah Matthews' expertise, uh, whether it be environmental, construction, some of those things more involved. Um, the miscellaneous professional fees and services are, we have to pay for appraisals, uh, expert witnesses and the like. Marshall fees. Filing fees.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the City Attorney. Uh, I know we've been, the more we talk, the more we find, uh, seasonal temporary help. You guys have seasonal temporary help?
Not in the five years that I've worked, uh...
Why are we putting in for four-hundred-and-fifty dollars?
Rather not close out the account.
Like we did several years ago with another account?
You, you could. I like to hang on to everything I can. And, and, and I just, I took a, a little gander, uh, at, at my department's budget over the years. And, uh, since, since I've worked for the city, uh, we've eliminated a position, uh, a clerk. We've reduced our research materials and subscriptions by more than fifty percent. And we've also reduced, uh, our outside other legal miscellaneous professional fees, uh, twice. So we had a forty-five-thousand-dollar cut in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, a four-thousand-dollar cut in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. Um, the only increase we've seen are contractual wage increases. And then in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, the position of risk manager was added to my department and assumed by, uh, under my budget. Um, you know, uh, due to the following, the passing of Kim Kell, we've not hired a risk manager, um, since that time. We've had a hire and freeze, but I will say that between my paralegal Tony Weeks and myself, we've assumed a lot of responsibilities as we're trying to get through this, this budget cycle. Um, it's, it's not been easy to do that work, but...
I thank you for those efforts.
Alderman Beatty.
Thank you. This time my mic is on. But the same thing, I'm thinking, you're, you're a super competent paralegal. Uh, no conferences necessary or electronic, uh, subscription to the Paralegal Journal. Uh, I guess I'm giving you a segue to ask.
Necessary or desired? They're two different things. Want and need are always different. I always have those conversations with my children. You know, I need this dad. Well, you don't need it. You may want it. Um, you know, we, we keep our, our threshold requirements in terms of, uh, our, our professional licenses and certifications. Um, I know that the, that law has changed in terms of the bar association and that there's mandatory continuing legal education, uh, twelve hours required per year now.
For, for both attorneys and paralegals?
Not paralegals, just for attorneys.
Oh.
Um, but thankfully, there's, uh, while there's some private industries that offer these seminars and they can be quite costly, there's also free seminars that are available that will satisfy that requirement, which we are availing ourselves of. There's also, there is money within our budget for those conferences and, uh, our online subscription to our research. Lexus provides online seminars, which our paralegal can also take advantage of because she has a subscription ID. It's part of our gross, uh, budget or cost for that subscription.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions for our law office? Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening. Attorney Burcham, your position with the city is still, um, categorized as part-time. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Ginatazio, yes, it is. It's still part-time.
And what are your required, um, hours or your, your, your work schedule in, in that capacity?
I believe it's twenty-four hours a week. Um, I, I don't, we now have the chronos, so I, I, it clocks me in. Um, but, you know, I didn't clock in tonight. It's not, I don't think it's an hour thing. It's more of a did you show up thing. Uh, so I, I think I meet my twenty-four hours.
Are you the only person in your department that holds a part-time position?
No, the trial counsel position, Attorney Woods, is also designated, uh, as part-time. Deborah Kelly, the Assistant City Attorney, is the only full-time attorney in my, in my office. But if anybody has the pleasure of being up at five in the morning and driving downtown, you'll see Matt Wood's car here. He's usually opens, he opens the building and has opened the building for two decades plus. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding our Law Department? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Burcham.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering all of our questions and the, uh, great presentation and the great work you do for the city of Milford.
Thank you, sir.
The next department on our agenda would be the Ethics Commission, page twenty-five, account number four-one-three-two.
Good evening. It also falls for me to present, uh, truth be told. Uh, I didn't, I didn't bring those numbers, but I know they, they, they've stayed the same the last five years. Uh, knock on wood. Uh, we've not had to, uh, I guess, uh, kick off the, the Ethics Commission for any matters that have come before it. Uh, but there is some certain costs in there, which, um, I don't think would be enough to satisfy the needs if, if any ethics matter came before the board, only because due to the nature of those issues, uh, there would have to be professional folks hired, uh, to conduct them. Um, but I think as currently poshered, it's, it's worked in the past and I don't recommend any changes. And if and when the situation comes up, I'm, I'm more than happy to come before this board, uh, if need be.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you and the City Attorney. It's just historical data. How many times does it meet or has it met in the last few years?
It, it hasn't. Um, there's been some recent communications that I have from the, from the sitting Ethics Commission about having an organizational meeting and just kind of a meet and greet. Um, in the last five years, I know they haven't met at once. It's, if a, if an ethics complaint comes in, that's when they meet. Uh, they're appointed, they're sitting there, but they don't meet monthly. Uh, there's no scheduled meeting.
So therefore, if something came up, there would have to be training involved before the...
It doesn't have to be. Uh, there, there, historically, there's been a training budget line item, but there's no mandatory training required by state statute. It's just in there.
Has that commission been consistent for the last few years? People, personnel?
Oh, in terms of its membership? I think it's a three-year appointment, Alderman Vitale.
Three years.
Um, so I know it's, it's a three-year appointment. I know some people have been on and it aged off. I think there was one or two appointments, uh, this past January.
Thank you.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, John. Um, just, uh, following on what Alderman Vitale brought up, I, I might have brought this up before. I was on this board years ago when this commission was established. And I remember at the time Walt Farley and the two venerable, but it was a bipartisan thing, where they, we had a, a very close vote on whether or not to have actually established this. Because the, the feeling was, the way that Alderman Farley and Alderman Bert Monroe, two of the most venerable aldermen to ever serve on this board, uh, put it, that ethics is something that is really kind of expected in public service. And each of the various divisions and departments of our city are responsible for that sort of thing. And their fear at the time, which I think has not really come to fruition, was that if you had such a commission, it would invite people to find fault or to file spurious complaints and that sort of thing. Just since we're talking about the Ethics Commission, which, I mean, do you feel that this is something that need, I mean, it's as needed right now, right? They're only called if there's, if there's an issue and that's very rare. Um, it's not a big budget issue, but just in terms of organizationally, do you see that this is something that is important to maintain in the city and to keep that commission active?
Chair, through you to Alderman Smith. I do think it's important to have, uh, provides transparency and a vehicle for which, uh, a resident, if they believe, uh, that something has happened, that they feel falls below, um, the standards expected of, of their city employees or city officials. Uh, it's certainly a vehicle in which they can, um, adjudicate, uh, that, that grievance, if you will. I think it speaks to the great work that this board does, the great work that our employees do, uh, for Milford, that we haven't had to convene that commission. Uh, but having it in place and setting aside what I believe to be a relative nominal amount of money for the budget, I, I think it's worth the while, uh, rather than to disband it and, um, you know, try to recoup to several hundred dollars of savings that it might provide.
Any more questions regarding the Ethics Commission? Seeing none, thank you again, Mr. Burcham.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
The next department on our agenda is Animal Control, page fifty-nine, account number four-three-four-zero.
Good evening. I'm Scott Ellington. I'm the Director of, um, Milford Animal Control. Um, the budget, I'm trying to keep it exactly the same as it was last year. The only exception was secretarial fees. We had a couple animal commissioners that retired due to health reasons and they have been replaced. And they are more energetic, whereas in the past we could count on basically two commission meetings not happening due to health concerns. Um, but not anymore. So, any question?
Any, any questions from the board regarding the Animal Control? Alderman Beatty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, through you. And thank you for your good work for our community. I have a question about overtime. I had a conversation with you and you were very helpful, uh, when we had a concern about Eisenhower Park and dogs being leashed properly. And, uh, at that time, you indicated that you didn't have enough resources to patrol on Saturday and Sunday, which was when, which is when some of the concerns, uh, emerged and that you do patrol regularly from Monday to Friday. Has that changed? This request, is this sufficient? And maybe you can enlighten us. Thank you.
I do have, I actually have two officers on Saturday. We are closed Sunday. The only thing we do is clean and feed. Um, and they do patrol up there on Saturdays when they can, when they're not dealing with other complaint. Uh, but Sundays would be a total overtime. Right now, the overtime structure, we have, uh, our overtime is basically determined by the public who goes through the police. So we respond through the police to our overtime calls. But right now, no, there's not really been anything set up for, like, maybe doing a sweep-through on a Sunday.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll start by saying thank you for everything you do for the, the city. And, uh, I wanted to ask, because there's a line item for animal food. And I, I read every so often that there's a shortage at the, the shelter in food and people are, and you're asking for donations. How often does that happen throughout the year?
Um, it's, when we put out the plea, we do run a pet food bank for people that are down on their luck. Uh, currently, we have like over a hundred and fifty families that can come in once a month and we collect, like, donations from the public and then we'll give them some food. So that way, in agreement, they'll get their pet shots or, you know. Some people actually will starve themselves to feed their own pets, just, just to help the public. Um, we really never really run out of our own food, but that's, all our donated food goes towards the pet food bank for the public.
Thank you. That's an excellent program.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, do we still have an agreement with, uh, the city of Orange or the town of Orange?
Yes, we do.
But how much money do they pay us?
Uh, they pay us three payments of twenty-five thousand each. So a total of seventy-five thousand. thousand.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. The town of Orange, in, in your opinion or based on the amount of calls, do you feel that the seventy-five thousand is sufficient or would you consider raising it in the future?
I actually can believe that it is beneficial to both parties. I actually do have some of the stats. Like for the previous year, we responded to a total of eighty-two complaints up in Orange. That's ones that actually require an officer to be there. Currently, we're standing at about ninety with two months to go, so I'd still say it's pretty beneficial to the, them as well as us.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, I remember a discussion in regards to fuel. Are they still allowing us to fuel up at their location when we're out there?
Yes, nothing's changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for the Animal Control? Seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation and for the great work you do for the city of Milford.
Thank you.
The next department on our agenda is the Milford Arts Council.
So, good evening, everybody. If you don't know my name, my name is Paige Millio and I'm the Executive Director of the Milford Arts Council. The packet that I have in front of you includes our brochure, which has our full calendar for the season. It includes a membership card, as an example. It includes our adjusted request, based upon the request of the Finance Department. It includes some metrics for you, some highlights of what we do throughout the community. You've received a copy of the budget. It also includes a promo piece of our venue at the Center for the Arts. It includes a color engineered drawing of the kiosks, which are part of our Good to Great Bond funding. And it includes about four or five event flyers of programming that we have coming up for the summer. Our budget has remained pretty stable until this year. We are in the midst of our Good to Great renovations and fabrication of the kiosks. Everything is on target, on time, and on budget. We had to cancel two of our fundraisers for this year, which totaled an estimated of about eight to nine thousand dollars of estimated income. We have been in transition with new board members and that's been a little bumpy, but hopefully they're gelling up now. We have a very good group moving forward into the new fiscal year. We made some adjustments through the year, tried not to touch our ten thousand dollar line item for maintenance and repair as much as possible, seeing that we have the benefits of the Good to Great Bond Funds to work on any issues that we had planned moving forward. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Does any, the board members have any questions regarding the Milford Arts Council? Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Not really a question, I guess, just a compliment of all the renovations and all the new additions to the facility. Looks really, really nice and all the programming that you guys do and all the different activities. If all the members aren't members, or all the board members aren't members, they really should be, take advantage of it.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Hi, Paige. Very concise information. I had all the questions answered as you passed it out. Just one question, how many members are there?
There's about three hundred and eighty right now. This year, we streamlined our membership dues. We were twenty-five dollars a year for a single member, fifty for a family. We went to a straight thirty-five general dues and everybody gets the same benefits. So whether you're a single member or a family member, you get two discounted tickets to most of your events, figuring that even if you're a single member, you would be coming with a friend or whatever. So the benefits are the same for everybody.
Thank you, and a nice job.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Paige. Has your membership gone up? I just want to follow up on Alderman Vitale. Have you had an increase in membership?
A slight increase. We have a lot of new members and in fact, some of the metrics that I added today to this letter is the fact that we have about fifteen to twenty percent increase of out-of-town attendees and a strong twenty percent uptick of first-time attendees. So of a lot of the first-time attendees, they are joining. We have our new program coordinator who, we had one person in the role for about six months and they moved on to Barnes and Noble. They had a full-time position. So we have a new program coordinator and just in the two months that she's been there, she has been fantastic about calling our membership, really getting them engaged. We have new volunteers who are coming in. We just hung the Moto, the Milford Photo Expo with a hundred and forty-six pieces and she got us eight volunteers. We had music playing, everybody was having a good time, getting to know each other, sharing their artistic endeavors and love of the arts. And that opening reception is tomorrow evening. If any of you would like to come, it's between five-thirty and seven.
Sounds terrific. Thanks a lot.
Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one other question, since you're right on the train line there, do you know or have any idea how many people come from the train up and down?
I really don't know. I, I know that at, at three-fifty, we have a, a line of cars and you cannot get anywhere near the Arts Council by car because it's jammed with people picking up commuters. I don't know if Milford Transit has any numbers about that or where to find out, other than sitting outside and hitting a clicker as everybody walks by, but it's, it's a huge amount. Milford has a huge amount of commuters and people who travel in and out of the area.
I was, I was more asking, of your membership, does any of them come from the train, like from Fairfield?
Oh, yes. We've actually been promoting that heavily in our social networking and in some of our kind of email blasts, we'll put it out there to come by train. And with our partnership with WPKN, they do a lot of fundraisers at the Arts Council. They utilize the venue, they urge their members and supporters to come by train. And we've also developed a relationship with John Reed, who's the Executive Director of FTC in the warehouse. So we've also been sending some of our members to his events via train and he in turn has been promoting the fact that we're right on the train line as well.
Yeah, it's a terrific way to travel, back and forth, up and down the train line.
Absolutely. And I think part of the kiosk's role is to help promote that travel as well. So the kiosks will be placed in our patio as well as in front of the Chamber of Commerce. It's not only promoting our events, but it's for the entire city. I mean, half of that bond funding of sixty thousand dollars is thirty thousand dollars for the two kiosks. It was not for renovations for us, but to prove our importance and our collaboration and our responsibility to the community, both the service groups, the community groups, the city of Milford, the business associations, all in all.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Paige. As always, I want to commend you on the great job that you do and the Milford Arts Council and how far this organization has come under your supervision and all the great people I know that volunteer there. I think I'm, we have a nominal aldermanic liaison and I apologize, I'm not there as often because sometimes it coincides with meetings we have here, but I do try, how did the Kentucky Derby event?
That was one of our two fundraisers that were canceled due to lack of interest.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. The Kentucky Derby, it would have been its seventh year. I think people who enjoy the Kentucky Derby and enjoy events like that, after a while, it's kind of like been there, done that. We're going to take a breather. The board is already coming up with another fundraising event idea. And I also don't know if it had anything to do with the fact that in view of our bond funding and the monies that we received in that effort and the business match, whether or not people were like, well, they're rolling in dough, they don't need money. None of that money went to operations, none of that money went to programming. It all went to things that we never, ever, ever have the money to do, the renovations and the improvement to that facility that were desperately in need. So it was very exciting to be able to do that.
Can you just update us on the condition of the, of the building, of the railroad building? I know that's been an issue in the past few years with roof leaks and things have been done.
So all of the work that was done through this gift from the state and the Milford Business Match, and by the way, that was from MPI, Stonebridge, the Downtown Business Association totaling fifteen thousand dollars. All of that work and the application for the bond funds were possible, I believe, because we worked with the city, with Milford Transit, to take care of the problems that were there. So I was able to go in the application and say, we've done all of the hard work, we've done all the behind-the-scenes, the building is now secure, we are ninety-eight percent dry, and now we want to renovate and give back to the community and recreate this jewel how it was originally presented to the community in nineteen ninety-five. So I think that was probably, gave us a leg up. And so we went through, when I started, eight to ten thousand dollars out of pocket for mold remediation, drywall, drywall removal, dump runs, air cleaning machines, air testing that went on and on. The support with Milford Transit and with the support of the city, we had the building repointed, we had areas of the facade that had deteriorated, both by rain, weather, and age, but also DOT's own removal of portions of the roof that were never sealed. When the train station was built, it had two hip roofs. One is aligned along Depot Street, one is aligned along the platform. When the platform and the trains were modernized and the platforms came up, they took that hip roof off. The hip roof covered the tops of the column details, which are straight brick. There was no headstone added to the, or no top added to those column details when the roof was taken away. So the mortar had actually, and the bricks had been fed by the rain and created gullies. Water was pouring into that side of the building in an amazing rate. And the mason went up there and at one point, one corner, he could actually put his entire arm down the column detail at the corner of the building. So that has all been fixed. We have a French drain and when it really pours and the rain is coming down, my electrical room, behind the walls of electric panels, I go down there and I watch it all swirl around the French drain and down to the sump pump and out back into the street, so that's a godsend.
May I, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up? How's the Firehouse Gallery? Is the only other property of the Milford Arts Council?
Correct.
Is that still viable? I mean, I know you have events there.
Yeah, that, thank you for mentioning the Firehouse. With the Good to Great Project coming to a close, my next attention is going to be focused on the Firehouse. Not so much planning specifically, but to create a steering committee of the business association down there, some of the residents, the volunteers, and the tenants who reside in the upstairs apartment, to really look at over the next two years, how the Firehouse is impacting Walnut Beach, because I don't think it's very impactful at all. It definitely needs a facelift on the outside, but perhaps how it is used by the Arts Council or not by the Arts Council may prove a better direction with having that discussion. So I know that the Walnut Beach Association has worked so hard and so diligently to find success that to leave that building pretty much empty and nothing going on six days out of the week is kind of ridiculous.
Any more questions regarding the Milford Arts Council? Seeing none, thank you, Paige. Thank you for your great presentation and your paperwork for us.
Thank you.
And the great work you do at the train station.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. The next account on our agenda is the Borough of Woodmont. Page eighty-eight, account number four-eight-one-one.
Hello, all. Kit Schmeizer, I'm a Burgess at the Borough, in the Borough of Woodmont. I am doing my best effort to channel Ed Benessi, the warden, tonight. He apologized us for not being here. He got called away on a business meeting, so he's out of the state and this was a last-minute thing, so, so I'm here. Just to, sort of as initial comments, I think I recognize most of the faces here, but just to remind everyone about the borough and, and sort of how it gets its funding, there is the grant funding that comes from you all and in essence, we sort of see that as a rebate of tax monies that are paid by the residents of the Borough of Woodmont to Milford. And as under the nineteen oh-three charter, it's, I mean, it's a rebate of monies that are used to cover all sort of the public works expenses of snow plowing, paving, lighting, structural repair of the borough and the like. So all the sort of the typical public works expenses that are expended in other parts of the city, we get a rebate to sort of expend them in Woodmont. That's sort of the, the grant money that comes from, from you all. The second bucket of money is, is the residents of the Borough actually pay additional taxes into Woodmont and that goes to provide additional expenses for, that are used by the Borough, such as providing additional police coverage, helping pay for a volunteer, the Volunteer Woodmont Volunteer Library, and doing a number of other community-related things in that area. And I just mention that because in a lot of ways, it's a, it's sort of a win-win for the city of Milford and, and in a couple of different ways. And when it relates to the money that you all give for the Borough of Woodmont, we have a very close working relationship with the Public Works Department here and with Chris Saley. And he has made it very clear that the rates that we get for providing a lot of the contract work that's done in the borough is actually cheaper when you take into account things like overtime and all that other stuff and benefits than the costs of contractor rates that Milford uses in other parts of the city. So that's, that's one of the pluses. The second thing is that there, we've developed frankly, since the, we're moving into a new Borough Hall, since the development of the new Hall, the former Firehouse, there've been a lot of sort of symbiotic benefits that I think are coming out of that. There is, in that Hall, the, the police station has one of its radio towers and police radio station that the Borough of Woodmont actually pays for and maintains in terms of the upkeep and the generator and the electricity. And it's a, it's a very usable space and they have an up and running radio station there. Also, there are a number of volunteers in the Borough that have been very active in, in working with the Police Department and with the city in terms of developing an emergency operation plan whereby there are volunteers that have gotten certified for being members of community, of community energy, of emergency response teams in case of hurricanes and stuff like that. The, the, the building has also been designed and renovated in a way and the surrounding area of the parking lot and stuff that, and it, it is classified as a type-three pod in the case of emergencies. So for example, if there's a substantial hurricane and there needs to be food or, in addition, in addition to the Hall being allowed, a space- addition to the hall being allowed a space that could be used for that, it's also designed so that, for example, large trucks can come in and drop off food and supplies as needed. So that is sort of, you know, worst-case scenario when bad times happen, but it is a benefit with, of the sort of the volunteers and the group that is working in that part of the city. The other, one other area that has been very active, two other areas. One is that, as you all may be aware with the various storms with Irene and Sandy, the city of Milford had some, a number of categorically designated beaches for FEMA replenishment in case that those were wiped out. The Borough of Woodmont is the only one that I think is still maintains that categorically status because of maintenance work that the borough in part had done over the years so that when Sandy and Irene hit, we were able, with the assistance of Milford, to go to FEMA and say, look, you need to give us money to help rebuild this area. So that is, that's a contract that was entered with the city in FEMA, a 50-year contract. I still think there's something like 30-some years left on it. It's a contract that we are sort of monitoring pretty carefully and trying to make sure that we're, that we as sort of third-party beneficiaries make sure that everyone is sort of adhering to that contract. Along those lines, just this past spring, there was, in terms of their levels that are shot, that the beach has to be maintained and for erosion control purposes, and the borough took money out of its tax dollars and put it towards, you know, funding those types of levels. Where actually, we have been working with the mayor's office to try to get the engineering department to make shots, to get shots of the levels so that we can keep a good record of that for FEMA down the road to say, look, yeah, we are continuing to do this work. And that's something that I would request you all to do your best to sort of mention to the mayor that that is a good thing because it's actually benefited the city to the tune of millions of dollars over the last four or five years with grants that have come through with, from FEMA. So that's sort of, the one last point I wanted to make about sort of what's going on in that area of Milford is that with the new renovation of the Firehouse, which was funded in part, two main sources. One is, well, three main sources. One was the, a SEEP grant that was obtained from the state of Connecticut for helping with the renovation. The other was the sale of the old Borough Hall. Monies that came from that were used for purposes of the renovation, and then some additional monies have been from some of the capital reserves that are on the, raised by money from the borough residents. And it's, again, it's been, I think, a win-win for the city. There's, I think, either now or the last couple of days or in this week, there's the, the Flood and Erosion Control Board is having a meeting there. We've had the literacy committee had their annual meeting there. So it's being, starting to really be used as a community center in a way that we had hoped and envisioned by talking with the city and getting the city to grant that building so that we could try to renovate it and make it a useful community area, which I think is going on. So in terms of going forward, as I've indicated in the past, we have a series of standard fixed costs and expenses with running the public works in that area of the city. Those aren't going down. We had requested more money for the initial grant request from the mayor, and the mayor's and the finance board had indicated, obviously, that finances are tight, so we're going to try to work with what was approved, and assuming you all go along with it. But we think that it is, at the end of the day, good value for the city of Milford. We are taxpayers also and frankly paying more taxes, given that the taxes at the borough costs. So we have a very vested interest in making sure that the money is spent efficiently. And I think that all your help has been tremendously helpful in that regard. Does anyone have any questions?
Alderman Bevan.
Which one, Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess it's not so much a question as it is to a compliment to the Burgess and the staff over there, and also to Jim Mallico for all the public works-type stuff that he does over there. We do get a good, really good value for all his work. And it's not just enjoyed by Woodmonters. I mean, there's people from all over Milford, from all over Connecticut, really, that come through there, you know, especially during the summertime. So I think it does get a lot of use, and it looks terrific. Also, I'd like to invite, everybody got an invitation here, to visit the borough. They've done a tremendous job there with the grant money and the sale of the old hall. They really did a beautiful job. And that's June 3 at 8:00, so encourage the board to.
At what time?
Or 11:00, sorry.
11:00.
11:00 AM.
There's actually going to be a dedication to the building, the sort of the new dedication for its new use as a Borough Hall, and you, I think, or I think you'll have gotten invitations, or if you haven't, you will get invitations, and certainly are welcome to come and see what's happening in that part of the city.
And thank you for your presentation and clarification.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had mentioned earlier, there's a special borough tax. Can you tell me how that's assessed for every home? Is it a flat tax, or is it? How do you assess that, please?
What happens is that the, it goes off the Milford Assessor Rate for each property, and there's a mil rate that's set. There's an annual meeting that happens every August, and what happens is that there's a budget that's set for the following July. So this August will be for, starting July 1 of next year. And then when the, Milford comes out with its assessed property valuations, the borough then sets its mil rate and assesses the tax. The actual, the budget has run around $130,000 a year, so it's frankly, it's getting up there in terms of, compared to actually the additional, the rebate that we get in terms of a grant of 230 or so thousand. And money there has been, is used for a range of things. As mentioned before, there's additional police coverage that benefits sort of keeping, sort of more police coverage around there during the summer when there may be more need. But the benefit to the city is that there are a lot of times when the police car, which is manned by a Milford officer on overtime, will be called back and will come to other parts of the city to serve the rest of Milford. So in that way, it's in addition to providing additional police coverage in Milford, in Woodmont, but also it assists the police in other areas. So it goes to police. It's used also for a range of different beautification projects. And then frankly, a good portion is set aside for erosion control in sort of like the, so for example, the monies that have been tapped into for the current city beach. If you go down in that area, you'll see that there's been more sand and rock put down there. That in part is used when needed, funded by the actual residents of Woodmont. Ideally, it should come from actually Milford because it is a Milford contract that is maintaining this. It's a, but I understand, and we are all aware of the fiscal restraints that the city is under, so we're trying to do our part to the extent we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. The refurbishing of the Firehouse looks fantastic. It is really, really is, adds to a lot down in that area. But you talked about, if I understood you correctly, you said you realized $130,000 in taxes last year?
From borough residents, yes.
From borough residents. What's the, what was the mil rate that was set with it?
I'd have to go back and look.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah.
Just one other question. I know it's almost like a community center, which is a great, great, a great concept. How many does it hold? How many people does the?
I think it's 285.
285. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just as background, there's about 1,700 residents in the borough, and generally, the borough tax is approximately half of a mil traditionally. It varies a little bit.
It's a fraction of the tax that the city of Milford imposes on us. It still does what it needs to do to get the job done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've kind of been breaking down the taxes quite a bit, but I would just like to know, what's the total budget for the borough?
I think that it's sort of, the way that we try to think of it is as sort of the city grant budget in terms of monies that are being used for the public works-type projects. And as I've explained sort of in the past, we're sort of a pay-as-you-go situation where we will have some capital projects that are going to cost more than the grant, sort of the excess monies that you would grant over our fixed contracts every year. So for example, there are a series of drainage groynes. There are city drainage groynes that go out into the sound, and those will last for anywhere from 30, 40, 50, 60 years. But when they deteriorate to the point that they require repair, that can be a 70, 80, $100,000 job, which is, would wipe us out for that year. So we have to basically reserve monies, build it up over time, and then dedicate it to a project like that. So we think of the budgeting process as sort of how do you appropriately expend the grant money that comes in from Milford? And then there's the separate budget that is passed in August that relates to how do we spend Woodmont residents' additional tax revenues? So there's, there's two, in essence, two budgets, depending on where the source of funds is.
Thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just kind of a lead-up from Alderman Grant. So we spent, or he spent quite a bit of money on sand this year, is that correct? Is that, that's one of the things?
Right now, right, the last erosion control project, which was about a month and a half ago, was, ended up involving two aspects. One, it was, the Army Corps of Engineers comes in and they say that the, there's a fair amount of sub-rock on the beach areas. It gets moved down to the ends and then ends up off the beach, off the city beach. And the Army Corps, to be in compliance of the contract, wants that rock to be pulled back up so that every year, every couple of years, when it moves down, we don't lose it. So the rock gets moved up, and then there's a top coat of soil, which is, of sand, which is further back, which is in efforts to sort of cover up some of that rock and make it more attractive for those who use the city beach. So that was, I think this is, it was in the range of about $190,000 to $100,000.
Thank you.
Any more questions regarding the Borough of Woodmont? Seeing none, thank you, Kit. Thank you for your presentation and for answering all the questions from the board, and the great job you guys do for the Borough of Woodmont. The next account on the agenda is the Board of Finance, page 26, account number 4141.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a philosophical observation. Alderman Smith indicated, or asked Attorney Bertram whether the Ethics Commission was a necessary portion of city government. And I'd like to ask if the Finance Board is a necessary part of the government since it either mimics or does a job, or should be doing a job, that maybe in concert with the Board of Alderman? Or help me understand the logic in the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Alderman Vitale. I'll give a broad overview, and I know that our finance director can fill in some of the details, but the Board of Finance is a necessary board as set by state statute. There are functions that the Board of Finance does at the sole discretion of statutory authority. There are items that go directly to the Board of Finance, and only the Board of Finance, they are the sole arbiter. The Board of Alderman doesn't address them, the Board of Education, but they do have a role in our budgetary process, an important role. They have a role in our everyday functions of local government. They are a big portion of our charter, and they're a big portion of state statute. So in Milford, as well as every other town in the state of Connecticut, it's an important role.
Again, I, you know, I didn't know it's statutory, so that, the point is that it has to be. But when you say it does a great, can you elaborate on some of those roles that are so important to the Board of Finance?
Well, I'll just give you a couple of examples of things that only go to the Board of Finance and don't go to any other boards that they are the sole arbiters of and for. For example, every year, there's a state statute that allows the Board of Education, if they have an excess or a surplus at the end of the year, they can place a portion of that surplus, I believe it's 1% of their overall operating budget, or up to 1%, I could be wrong with that figure, into a reserve fund. They have to have the approval of the Board of Finance, not the Board of Alderman, the Board of Finance, in order to do that. And again, there's a whole host of other things that the Board of Finance is the decider on, too.
Thank you. Thank you for the information.
Any more questions regarding the Board of Finance? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for answering some of those questions. The next account on our agenda is the Mayor's Office, page 17, account number 4121.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The account that is in front of you, the Mayor's Office, is substantially a status quo from previous years. There's a few reductions, but essentially, it is the same budget that you've seen for the last couple of years. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. to the mayor. Seasonal temp. Is there a season when we use temp?
There is. We use it for, you know, if there's a vacancy, it's a relatively small office. Not going to any details, but if there's a person that is out for an extended period of time, we have used that to fill, for example, the lunchtime hour so that the office has at least some person manning the phones during the lunchtime hour, the couple hours during lunch, if there is a person in that office that's out for an extended period of time.
Thank you. I can see the extended period of time, but I can't see the idea of not staggering with multiple personnel in an office, staggering lunches, I don't think. But I can see that. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding the Mayor's Office account? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next account on our agenda is under General Expenses, page 19, account number 4122.
Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions, Peter and I certainly can answer some of those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the mayor, there's a line item for the Beaverbrook Property Maintenance. If you could just elaborate how that project is coming along?
The project is fully designed. It went out to bid. The bids were received. The bids came in substantially higher than the engineer, Melona McBroom, had anticipated. They have to reconfigure the bid specs and put out, either put it out to bid again or talk to the bidders about some of the deduct and add alternates. I can have Steve Johnson, our open space coordinator, who is helping to oversee that project, give you a report on the status.
Thank you. That'd be helpful.
They have to reconfigure the bid specs and put out, either put it out to bid again, or talk to the, the bidders about some of the, the deduct and add alternates. I can have Steve Johnson, our Open Space Coordinator, who is helping to oversee that project, give you a report on the status.
Thank you. That'd be helpful.
Any more questions? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Soccer field rentals. I see that that was at $21,000, and now it's down to zero. Is that due to the fact of the two new soccer fields that we just built up by the YMCA?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Bevan. I thought it went down to $1, but I guess it's zero. And that is a negotiated price. Again, as you remember, we were paying approximately $21,000, $22,000 a year for that. We came to an agreement, an arrangement with the YMCA, a good community partnership. We did a land swap, which allowed us to install two fields running north and south. As part of that land swap, we agreed to fund a shared parking lot with them on the north side of their property, so that we can feed our overfull parking for the two city fields. They were able to use it during the day for their, their needs or their purposes, for their, their preschool program, for the use of their facility. So, it's a shared parking lot arrangement. As part of that arrangement, we were able to negotiate a reduction of the annual fee for the term of the contract that we have with them, which was $21,000, $22,000 a year, down to $1, maybe it's $0.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions regarding the General Expenses? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, the Burt Plains Open Space allocation, is that for, how much longer will we be paying for this? Is that the, go towards the payment of the property?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Ginatasio. This is former Water Company property that, I think, approximately 10 years, maybe 11 years? 10 years, okay. 10 years ago, we entered into an agreement with the Water Company to pay. I, I think for the first nine or 10 years, it was interest-free, and that's why for the first nine or 10 years, it was only $30,000, and now it's $31,000 and a little bit. I think that Mr. Aradisi has the exact details of that arrangement.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Alderman. I believe the agreement was a 10-year agreement, and the first five years was interest-free, and the last five years, there was interest. And I believe we're at the tail end. I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're in the eighth year, seventh or eighth, so we're getting close to the end of the 10-year agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Mayor. The CCM Annual Levy of $35,000, what do we get out of that, or what, what's the city use for that?
That's the municipality's professional organization that we belong to. 10 years ago, I didn't think we were getting a lot of value, to be honest with you. The more that, the more that, there is more difficulty in the state governments, the more value I see out of CCM. They help with lobbying, they also help the city. Any type of training that we have, they put on the presenters, you know, that saves us a lot of money. The data service that they have helps us with our union negotiations. If there's research questions, and I know a lot of the different Aldermen have, have asked, they help with the research. They have a research team, where they're able to solicit information from the various municipalities throughout the state, to see how they're doing things, you know, better, faster, and smarter, and, and feed that information to folks that are inquiring. They also help, just with, just with coordinating a concerted effort from a municipal standpoint to help lobby Hartford, to help lobby Washington on behalf of the municipalities. I have seen a lot of value over the last couple of years for this particular organization, and I think that folks who have availed themselves of some of the services that they have to offer probably have too. I know that some of the Aldermen, I think Alderman Bevan, you, and I know Alderman Beatty has gone to many different sessions. I went to a session where Alderman Beatty was there yesterday, up in Meriden, Connecticut, where the, the thrust of the conversation was around the state budget, and there were members of the legislature there to answer a lot of the questions that we had, and there were other towns and municipalities for which we could, you know, bounce ideas off of each other. So, it, it has been a, a good experience, especially as of late.
Thank you, and I do encourage the, the board to attend some of those conferences. They are pretty informative, so, thank you.
Any more questions regarding General Expenses? Hearing none, the last account for this evening was account, the Board of Aldermen account, page 14, account number 4111. None of you Aldermen have any questions regarding the Board of Aldermen account? I'm impressed. Oh, there's one.
I do have to ask one question.
Alderman Bevan.
Can we add, like, a perk, maybe free golf or something on, on Orange Hill, or the, or the orchards?
I think you should double the salary line item for the Aldermen in this account.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're on this, and I, I don't know whose idea it was, but we, we got parking, like, Milford employee parking stickers. I don't know if I should say this on the air, but I mean, who, whose idea was that? And has that caused any difficulty with city departments' parking for paid city employees?
I think Tony got, it was stimulated by Tony's toe, toe, and the mayor was gracious enough to give us parking stickers.
Oh, is that what it was? Okay.
Lost Tony $150.
Thanks, Tony. Nice job.
So, we say thank you to Tony, is that it?
Thank you, Tony.
And, Mr. Chairman, just one thing I want to point out as well, because Mayor Blake mentioned it, I get asked all the time if we are paid for this, and, you know, just to make the public aware, none of us are paid. There, there is no line item for salaries. We all do this for volunteer purposes, for the love of Milford.
And I commend you for that, and thank you for all the hard work that you do and all the long hours. Again, especially through, for this budget cycle, which is going to be a lot of work, even now that the departmental budget meetings are wrapped up. Now comes the deliberations, and I know that Alderman Vito is going to talk to you about the next one that we have, and we're going to recess until that next one, but get ready to dig in, because there's going to be some recommended adjustments, and at the end of the day, you are the final arbiters. You're the ones that adopt the budget. I appreciate all the good work and the hard work that you do. Certainly, the Finance Director and myself are willing to sit with you. If you have questions between now and the ultimate budget vote, and give us a call, morning, noon, or night, and we're happy to, again, sit down with you. If you have individual questions, or if you have group questions, we can address those at the meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask for a motion to recess to the next budget meeting on Monday, May 15. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We are in recess.